Tiffen City Council. There's one, do we have any motions? Councilman Jones?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we table ordinance 2075. Until September of 2020, because that's when the full report from Raphateas, how do I pronounce that, is going to be available, and I don't think we have our facts and figures together until then, so I'm going to make a motion or entertain a motion for that.
Brent? Help me out here.
September of 2020.
Yeah, the, any council member under motions, or after a reading of the, of a ordinance, may move to table an ordinance. They'll have to get a second, and they'll have to get a majority to approve it, otherwise it will not be tabled. But that is a prerogative of a council member.
That's my understanding also. Thank you, Law Director.
Alright. So, you'll make that motion, you'll make that motion when we go into, when we go into session.
Okay.
Councilman Leopard?
Who signed the petition, Ann?
This was signed by Doug and Donna Cook, 129 First Avenue.
I'm, I'm sorry, the ordinance, 20-75.
Okay, that's different. 20-75 was signed by Ben Gilligan. Okay?
Alright, one of the, one of the reasons for meeting early is to look at budget issues. Mayor, do you have anything that you want to bring to our attention? It looks like the numbers are moving in a more positive direction, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mr. President, as we had predicted, come June, numbers would begin to improve as income tax returns that typically would have been reported in late March and April began to trickle in for the city, so that's very positive news. I sent the update out earlier today before I ran to eat dinner, and things are looking, looking a little bit up for us here in the city financially. We're still down, I pull it up here, we are still down since the pandemic hit approximately 21%. That's better than we started off. If you recall, April, we were down essentially 30%. The month of May, we were down 25%. Right now, we're down total since the pandemic hit by 21%, so it's improved. We are still down just a hair under half a million dollars from where we should be on June 12th. So, once the deadline hits, one month from today, on July 15th, we'll have a much better understanding of where the city is currently financially. We know we're going to take a hit. You look at the unemployment numbers, they're up over 20% right now, at least the last month for reporting. Since it's always a month behind, we're waiting on the newest totals. But currently, with unemployment hovering around 20%, obviously, we're going to see a reduction in our income taxes that we've collected. So, while we have improved, we are still down about $500,000 of revenue to where we should be right now. So, we're going to continue to monitor. We will be sending out updates nearly every day to our city council members and the department heads. I can't thank department heads enough for really tightening the purse strings here at City Hall, and figuring any and all ways that they could to make cuts, whether it was reducing manning. We offered a lot of voluntary furloughs. We had a lot of employees jump on them, which is very positive. They were able to get some additional time off, paid, and at the same time, saving the city some fairly significant dollars. So, there's just been a lot of creative things that we have done here at City Hall with the administration and our staff, in order to try to keep that number as, as much in line as we can, in hopes that once income tax returns start coming in, that we're to a good place financially, to where we can get through this year, avoiding anything like layoffs, et cetera. That's the ultimate goal, is to not have a significant impact on the services that we provide to our residents, and also not have to lay off any staff.
Does anybody have any comments for the mayor, or suggestions, anything we haven't discussed? Well, it's all positive, we're, you know, I'm really happy, I know we all are, to see the the numbers moving, moving the other way now, so hopefully we'll keep it going. Do we have any suspensions tonight? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, we have several items that we're requesting suspension on. The first item is Resolution 2026. That is so that we can make formal application to the state of Ohio to receive our coronavirus relief funds here in the city. As, as good as that sounds, the relief funds, of course, are only for expenses directly related to the coronavirus, so we can't make the argument, unfortunately, that our revenues are down half a million dollars because of coronavirus. That does not make the cut. However, there are other expenses that we have had that are related directly to coronavirus, so we are asking council to suspend and pass that this evening. I believe the deadline is June 30th. So, this is the final meeting, before that needs to be turned in. Also, I completed last week the application, or at least the initial grant application, to the Federal Emergency Agency FEMA. We are collecting data right now. It's about a 35-page PDF report of information that we have to send into them, but step one has been completed. It was acknowledged by FEMA, and we will be submitting the rest of the information to them. There is no deadline for that. It's just a first come, first served. So, we are collecting data that we can turn in, because the rules are not exactly the same for money that we can ask the state for from coronavirus relief versus what we ask FEMA for. So, entirely different reports, different information, different types of things are covered in the funding, but we will be submitting that as soon as we feel like we have the final, or at least close to the final totals, so that we can submit. So, if council could suspend 2026 this evening, that will allow us to meet the deadline to apply for those state coronavirus relief funds.
Can I add, who signed, who signed that? Ben, did you sign that? Okay. Go ahead, Mayor, I didn't mean to.
The next one is ordinance 2026. That is to approve the contract with TSEP.
2066?
66, yes.
Yeah, did I, yeah. Anyways, 2066 is, needs to be suspended this evening, because the contract expires with TSEP at the end of this month. We did have first reading, this would be passage on second reading. A lot of the reason behind this is the contract expires the end of the month, and also we really need to get that financial relief that TSEP is providing us, if you recall. They are giving the city of Tiffen a 20% reduction on our services for the next year. So, council passing this will allow us to save that money, and it's just additional, while it's not revenue, it is cutting of expenses that will help that $500,000 that we are currently down in revenue. It's just one more step towards balancing that out. So, I would ask council to suspend and pass 2066 this evening.
And, and I can add to that, Mayor, if you don't mind, the, the agreement is to front-load that savings too, so that there won't be any payment due to TSEP until September, because in the discussion, negotiations, TSEP understood maybe a cash flow issue with the city even, so that they delayed any first payment until the month of September.
Okay, good. Anything else, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, we're requesting suspension of ordinance 2069. That is to appropriate the refunds for the swimming pool. Because of us not opening, we sold just under $2,000 worth of season passes, and that is just money that we can refund the cost of season passes to individuals who purchased them. I, I think it's right that since we've announced that we're not doing this, individuals need money right now, since we have no idea, some of these individuals who have purchased season passes at the pool may be unemployed currently, so if we can get that money back to them as soon as possible, it would be appreciated.
Okay. Is that it?
No.
Okay.
The next one would be ordinance 2071. And the reason for that is the deadline is to, that is to apply for the community development lot grant money. The deadline is the 17th, so in two days, the application is ready. I signed it this morning, so as long as council passes it this evening, we will be able to apply for those funds, and ensure that we receive about $150,000 of grant money from the state of Ohio, which we plan to put into Nature Trails Park, as we discussed at the last meeting. So, if council would so move to pass under suspension this evening, 2071, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I'm going to go to a good use.
What was that?
I said it's going to go to a good use.
Definitely. And then the next one, this is, unfortunately, we're asking for suspension of ordinance 2073. That is for an increase of expenditures. We, we never know how much money to budget when it comes to our labor attorney. And unfortunately, due to labor negotiations that his council knows extended well into this year, we've exhausted that fund, so we do need to transfer some additional money into that line to continue to pay for anything that may come up this year. With two of our, with several of our unions, we have reopeners that will occur towards the end of this year, so the expenses will come this year, and hopefully instead of next year, so we never know. That line is just one of them, that we do the best we can to hold the line with it, but unfortunately, with how long it took to reach agreements this year, we are out of money in that fund, and we're going to need council to appropriate more in order to pay the bills.
Did you, did you sign that, Ben? Ben?
Yes, Mr. President.
Pardon me?
Yes, I did, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all, Mr. President.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or not, but last night, it was getting late, whatever, so I clicked on Tiffen City Council, whatever. About six line items came up. I went down to the second line item, it had said agendas, so I clicked on that, and here the agenda was for April 7th, 2014. And I know Brenda Wykert spoke at a city council meeting, she was talking about being transparent, I think she even mentioned it'd be nice to have the agendas on our website. So, then below that, it was all current information. But again, that agenda, six years old, just didn't seem professional, for lack of better terms. Then I went down to the third tab and clicked on that, it's something about agendas, it had the same 2014 agenda. I went down to the fourth line item, clicked on that, same 2014 agenda item. So, I think it'd be nice if we can get council approval, or whoever needs to do it, to start posting our agenda ahead of time for residents to see what we're going to discuss, versus what Councilman Leopard said at one time, they could come to the meeting, and I think his word was peruse the agenda. So, throw that out there for discussion.
I got your email last night, Councilman Jones, I didn't respond, because I needed to get some additional information on what past practice has been, and how easily we could incorporate that into our, into our webpage. So, I talked with, I talked with Nick Dutrow, and we can, we can, we can do that, we can incorporate that on for each meeting. Wouldn't be, wouldn't be too difficult. Right now, we have a problem, because our administrators, he's over, he's overseas, I guess. So, there's a couple of things, a couple of glitches we have in the system that need to get fixed, so that's, that's, that's one issue. So, I'll throw it out to the rest of you, how do you feel about putting, putting the agenda on? Now, let me, let me preface this, when, my, my thought is we're just looking at the, the front page, and the ordinances and the resolutions, we're not, we're not talking about incorporating the minutes and everything else that goes with, that we get. We're just, when we say agenda, we're just talking about the items that we discuss at our meeting. Is that your?
Yes, that's my understanding, if you're asking.
I think we just lost Rich.
Looks like it.
We did lose him, hopefully he dials right back in.
My, my screen just went blank. Can you all hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Where was I? So, anyway, that's, that was, that, that, if we do it, that's, that's what I would think we'd want to incorporate. What, what, what do the rest of you think? Councilman Gilligan?
I think it's a phenomenal idea. Just to have as much information as we can out there, so that it's readily accessible. I know we, you know, do discuss when we have meetings, or the purposes of special meetings that go in the paper, and go on Facebook, and everything else, but this could just be another avenue. I also noticed we need to update our committees form that it clicked on, it's still lists Mark and Jim on it on the council page.
Ann?
I was just going to add, Mr. President, that has been submitted. Why it's not updated, I don't know, but I can follow up with Nick Dutrow on that if you want.
Okay. Mayor?
If I can add, we're happy to have anything that council wishes on the website, it's just council needs to communicate with Nick Dutrow to ensure the information gets put on there. Because that, you know, this is council's meetings, council has their page on there. We at the administration can't guess, and, and have our own things to worry about. I know Clerk Forrest said that she submitted that, so we'll follow up with Nick and find out why the updated roster is not on there, any information. But the rest of the items, that's all for you to decide, and then get that information to Mr. Dutrow, because we can't read minds down here, nor do we have the time to, to, to take care of all of this council business. So, whatever you all would like, please just reach out to Nick and get that information to him.
Okay. Ann, would you be okay with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'll do that. Yeah, I'll follow up with him. There was another thing I noticed that had not been changed either, so I will, I'll take a look at that with him.
And, and you would be okay with the agendas, getting those to Nick?
Yes, absolutely. Well, he gets, yeah, he has copied on them anyway, so we'll just advise him that we want them posted.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Perry?
Oh, I mean, I think it'd be a good idea to even post the agenda on the, on the website, or on the Facebook page. I know a lot of people follow via Facebook, that way they can follow along as we're talking about this stuff, and kind of know when we're going to talk about certain issues and stuff, so just another idea to kind of throw out there.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Problem with it either way.
Okay. Councilman Gilligan?
Could I ask who operates our City of Tiffen government page on Facebook?
The City of Tiffen government page is run by a combination of myself, Nick Dutrow, and Kathy Moore are the three with the access to that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, without objection, then we'll start, as soon as, it might not be for the next meeting. Or, well, let's, hopefully, the, the first meeting in July, we can have it. We can, we can have it posted. So, without objection, we'll go ahead and start doing it. Mayor?
Yeah, what I would encourage you, Rich, is to, whatever you want posted on there, to either have you or the council clerk be the one to send information to Nick Dutrow. But you need to be specific when you want it posted on there. Don't just copy him on the message, whether it's, you know, the, the new committee assignments, or new contact information. Don't just copy him on that message, and just assume that he knows to post that. It needs to be sent to him and said, please post on the website. Or if, if it's something you all want on Facebook, it needs to be posted, or told directly to him that you would like that posted. Just because he's copied on something doesn't tell him, please post this, or if it's just for his information. So, just be clear when it's something that you would like posted, whether it's on Facebook, or whether it's on the website, that he knows that it's information to be posted there, and it's not just an FYI for him.
No, we, we, that's our intention, Mayor.
Good, thank you.
We discussed it with him, and that's, that's the way we would approach it.
That'd be perfect. I just don't want poor Nick to have to act like a mind reader, and know what he's supposed to post and not to post.
Exactly. Okay. Um, I had another, I had another item here. Everybody received a letter from about the golf carts, did everybody have an opportunity to read that? We, I guess it was a year ago, we, we discussed this very, very issue, and it went to, it went to committee, got voted on a committee. The ordinance that was presented to council eventually got, got voted down. So, the issue's been raised again, and I wanted all of you to have the opportunity to comment on it, to see if we wanted to move further with it. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't involved in that in 2019, as you all know. But it was my understanding, and I don't know where I got it from, that if a golf cart is street legal, with a license plate, bells and whistles, et cetera, et cetera, I thought it was a verified, registered four-wheel vehicle that could travel the streets of Tiffen, and that was my understanding, even before 2019, so someone can help me out on that.
Law Director?
Yeah, the, the, there was a law that was put into effect several years ago, that the way it's set up is that it prohibits golf carts unless the local municipality, in this case, would allow them. So, they are prohibited until allowed, and then only on certain streets that do not exceed, I think, the 35 mile per hour speed limit. So, you would have to take action in order for golf carts to be allowed under the state statute.
Councilman Jones?
So, I'm speculating, if we pass an ordinance such as this, someone could drive downtown and park in a normal parking space, and that would be acceptable. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Yes, um, now, I have been battling so many complaints about so many things, and this is just one more thing I didn't want to have resurrected on top of the board right now. I was a no before, I'm still not happy with it. Downtown is too congested with semis, cars, to have golf carts down there, slowing up traffic. I've had to follow them myself, going through TU's complex, I find it very annoying. And with Councilman Jones' comment, kind of explains why I see golf carts out and around, from time to time, out in my area. I know they're illegal, but for some reason, people seem to think that they can do it, and my fear is once this, if it gets lifted, any golf cart's going to be on the streets, because they'll figure, well, it's okay, until somebody stops them. Like I said, it's just, right now, we've got so many battles we're going on, this is just not one more thing I want to hear about right now.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to take issue with Councilwoman Yonatuno's comments, but again, I live in the area, I drove around today, Tiffen University had a few golf carts, there was two guys in one of them, they stopped, picked up a branch, threw it in the back of the golf cart. Again, that was TU, and I know that discussion will come up as we discuss the golf carts. But if someone wants to drive a golf cart on a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and not cause any problems, and understand your comment about semi trucks, they may not be able to see them, but they can't see Councilman Perry's scooter, they can't see Councilman Shuff's scooter, so I, I guess I would be for it. I don't have any objections, myself.
Councilman Gilligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, for me, this is going to sound very contrarian. I do believe we should open it up to discussion. If I recall correctly, the ordinance wound up failing, because we were missing a few folks in council, even though we did have a majority that did vote in favor. I was a no vote, and for me, I just, I, for me, I guess I'd never heard the reason why it was a good idea, other than, well, a couple gentlemen have golf carts, and would like to be able to legally ride them in the city. I don't, I didn't really see that, you know, there was a big demand for golf carts in the city at the time, and, you know, perhaps there is. But, you know, I think it's at the very least worth a discussion. We have, you know, three new council members, and you know, I think it's, it's certainly still worth a discussion, even though I'm leaning, you know, more towards the no at this time, but certainly open to learn more.
Okay. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Just to clarify, I did not say that semis can't see them. My concern is semis have a hard enough time maneuvering downtown without being slowed up off carts, because they can't go 25 miles an hour. And, as I said the last time, we are not, you know, they, we're not a community that travels all over the place on them. Like Councilman Gilligan said, I just really don't see the point why it's necessary.
Councilman Leopard?
Just in the last two weeks, City of Doorwalk approved golf carts, I found out today. And I remember last year, I looked at 35 different villages and cities in their codified ordinances to see if they approved golf carts. Lo and behold, there was only one of those 35 that I investigated, actually had an ordinance, an ordinance on the books, and that was the Village of Attica. It was a very well-written ordinance, I think Brent even attested to that, and it's kind of funny, coming from a community of 600 people or less.
Does anyone else have a comment? The question, the question for all of you, do, is there enough interest here to continue the dialogue? I'll assign it to a committee if there is. If not, we'll just end it. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I'm just thinking out loud, I don't know 10 people in Tiffen that own golf carts, so I really don't think, and pick a number, whether it's 10, 12, 20, even if 10 people are driving golf carts downtown Tiffen, I don't think it's that big of a deal, so that's my input.
So, I, how would, not that big a deal, so you don't think it's worth discussing further? Councilman Jones? Councilman Jones?
Sorry, Mr. President, just the opposite. I'm sorry. No, I meant just a handful of people are going to be utilizing this. It's not going to be a burden to the city traffic, semi trucks, et cetera, et cetera. So, no, I, I meant just the opposite.
Okay. All right. Councilman Perry?
I would probably lean that way as well. Um, I can't see a whole lot of people really utilizing, um, a ton of golf carts within the city. Um, and as long as they're doing it safely and the, you know, they have all the requirements by the DMV and they have license plates and stuff, um, I, I would be okay with it as well. So that's just where I would.
Thank you. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm open to the discussion and learning more about it. So I'm fine with moving forward with the discussion.
Okay. Councilman Leopard?
Uh, doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Well, I think there's enough interest. We're gonna move ahead with it. I'm gonna assign it to Law Community Planning. Councilwoman Boyle? Thank you. All right, that cleans up my list. I can go home now. Oh, I am home.
Please, you can have a beer.
All right, does anybody, uh, does anybody have anything else?
Mr. President?
Law Director?
Yeah, just, uh, I think it would be worthwhile that I, um, highlight the, uh, some of the terms of ordinance twenty-seven-five, which decreases sewer rates by ten percent. If, if I recall correctly, at your prior discussion, um, there was a direction to have, uh, an ordinance read, uh, introduced and passed, um, in which I prepared for, to decrease the sewer rates and try to do that as soon as possible to provide some relief to the, um, sewer customers. And that this would, um, be in place through the end of the year, um, understanding that in March of every year, there's an ordinance that says that the, um, sewer rates go up by five percent. Um, I talked to, um, uh, the, um, um, the Sewer Revenue Office, City Administrator, uh, Finance Director, and, um, to apply this, uh, fairly to the residences. Um, they get their bills every two months, as you know, and so we want to make sure that we provide the same benefit to all residential customers. And so it made sense then to initiate this, starting with the billing of August first, so that all residential customers then would receive the same benefit of four bills with the reduced ten percent. Um, and that would take us even into the, the next year, which is not an issue because, again, people are expecting the five percent increase in March, um, if they kind of paid attention to the bills. Commercial accounts, they get billed monthly, and so they will have the same benefit, eight bills, uh, or eight months, which is the same as residential customers. Um, will get the same benefit, same reduction, um, on their bills. So trying to, to capture the same, um, um, result for all the, uh, the sewer customers, and that's why it starts August first. This also gives you the opportunity to read the, the legislation a couple of times and then vote on it, so it's not done in a real hurried fashion, uh, at one meeting. So I thought that that seemed to meet, um, conceptually at least, the, um, the, the consensus of council when I received the direction to prepare that ordinance. But I wanted to highlight, you know, why those particular dates were included. Um, and if you had any questions, you could let me know.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess that clarifies it, but I know when we spoke about this two weeks ago, it was a six-month reduction on the sewer bills. Then, um, as I get the ordinance here, I see it's seven and a half, and I, well, seven and a half, eight, I had seven and a half. I'm reading the ordinance twenty-seventy-five. It looks like a seven and a half month break. That's not what we discussed in open council meetings, but I understand where you're coming from to make it for equal payments for everyone. So. So that's kind of surprised me when I saw eight months instead of six.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why I wanted to give some explanation of why it was written that way. And you can obviously, uh, dig into it deeper and within, before you pass it and make changes if you feel it's necessary. We can talk more with the Sewer Revenue Office, but we thought that this was the fairest way to apply what the message that I got from council a couple of weeks ago. And then it, it sets you up for the five percent increase, which I know we discussed that we would, you know, take back ten percent, and then they would, um, uh, bring, you'd bring back five percent next March. In twenty-twenty-two, there'd be a additional five percent so that you'd be back to where, um, you are right now. I think that was the discussion I heard last, uh, last meeting.
Yep. Um, Councilman Jones?
Moving this in after March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, I do recall, and I went back and reviewed our last meeting, and Mayor Monce said something about come March fifteenth, increase of five percent. Continue this through twenty-twenty-one. I don't recall discussing that in our city council meeting. I thought we were talking six months. I never thought we were talking six months into January first, and then another twelve months, January first, at twelve thirty-one of twenty-twenty-one. I was not comfortable with the six-month timeframe, and I'm darn sure not pleased with a eighteen-month timeframe. So when you said we talked about it in a council meeting, I think Mayor Monce alluded to continuing this through twenty-twenty-one. That was not my understanding at all.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
That's not how I took that meeting. I understood very clearly that it raises five percent in March, and so we were gonna go through the percent down to March for five percent. They would still see another savings for an entire year until the next five percent, which would get us back to where we are now. That was very clear to me anyhow, last meeting.
Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you. We're really not gonna know where we're at until we get our report back from the, uh, from the contractor that we hired to study the situation. We might be charging too much. We may not be charging enough.
Um, City Administrator Thornton? You're muted, Dale. You're muted.
I'm sorry. I've had extensive discussion with Raff Tellus. Their understanding was the council wanted to provide the citizens of Tiffin with a reduction because of the COVID situation, but didn't want to have to go back to the people and raise rates beyond what they already are used to seeing to recover that reduction. Their recommendation was based on not ever having to go back to them and recover the reduction that we gave to them during the COVID situation. So in effect, they get a ten percent reduction through March fifteenth, and then March fifteenth of next year, the normal five percent increase would be applied. But that's five percent increase based on a ten percent reduced rate. So there, as the mayor was saying in the last meeting, they're still getting a five percent, uh, advantage for the rest of that year. Raff Tellus does not feel that that will, um, negatively impact our sewer fund. So they feel you can give a reduction for six months without impacting, uh, the sewer fund negatively, if that helps.
Yep, thank you. Uh, Councilman Shuff?
Who, who signed twenty-seventy-five?
Pardon me?
Who signed twenty-seventy-five?
Ben Gillig.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Councilman Jones, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. President. My husband sees something, whatever Dawn said. Oh, was I at the same meeting two weeks ago as the twelve of you? Because I don't recall that. That's item one. And y'all, Levin can answer you were there, 'cause I guess I was maybe there by face, but whatever. And item two, City Administrator Thornton, the last thing he said was a six-month reduction in rates. Could he clarify that? Not eighteen-month reduction?
I'm sorry. It was, it would be from August, after it was redrafted, would be from August of twenty-twenty-two, March of twenty-twenty-one. So it's nine months. You're correct. It's more than just, it's August, September, October, November, December, January, February, March. However, many months that is. I can't count on my fingers that fast.
Councilman Jones?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Based on what City Administrator just said, we're not talking twelve months of twenty-twenty-one. Is that correct?
Exactly. It says right there in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, Law Director?
Yeah, I know, I know we're getting pretty close to the meeting, um, but I'd like to have a little more discussion and, and direction of council to make sure that, um, that the ordinance is drafted um, as, um, as you would like. Um, I think we need some clarity on this. So, uh, that's my suggestion. I'd like to hear more discussion and, and more direction because we might need to revise this ordinance before, uh, your next meeting.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Leopard?
I would just say, let's read it for the first time tonight. We've got another month to, uh, determine where we want to go, what we want to do.
Okay, um, is that sufficient, Law Director?
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I think there just needs to be a healthy discussion and, and make sure everybody understands. And, and then, then you can vote on it however you wish, but we need, I need to make sure that I present something that is clear on, on one way or the other, I guess. And I'm not sure if I've captured it right now, hearing some of the, the thoughts of council members.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, um, I'm going to announce the committee, the whole meeting, uh, adjourned. And we'll start with the regular meeting in a moment. Did you get that tree out of your front yard, Councilman Shuff?
All gone.
All gone? You're lucky it fell the way it did.
It could have been a lot worse. Luckily, nobody was hurt and no, uh, no damage done.
Yeah, I guess. It was scary. Quite a storm.
About twenty minutes before the thing came through, I had my Jeep right in the driveway, right where the tree fell. I moved it just in the nick of time.
Glad it didn't get your scooter. Um, it's now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the, uh, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty, Meeting of Tiffany City Council to order. Uh, Councilman Leopard will lead us in invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Councilman Leopard?
Will you please join with me in our Lord's Prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Leopard. Uh, Clerk Forrest, would you please read, uh, roll call, please?
Councilman Leopard? Councilman Perry?
Yep, here.
Councilman Shuff?
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Councilman Gillig?
Here.
Councilwoman Yonatuno? Councilman Jones?
Here.
Let Director show that all seven members of the council were present. At this time, I'd like to, um, bring to order a public hearing. Uh, the purpose of the public hearing is to gather public input regarding the application and ordinance, um, ordinance twenty-sixty-five that would establish a designated outdoor refreshment area, uh, known as a DORA in downtown Tiffin. Anyone from the, uh, wishing to address council from the public, uh, may raise their hand and direct your comments to the President. Uh, so that everybody's aware, uh, we're going to limit all comments this evening to no more than five minutes. So we appreciate, uh, people that have, um, have called in. We have a number of people. So, um, please restrict your comments, uh, to the President, uh, to five minutes or less. Thank you. All right. Kathy, can you hear me?
I do, and I see that Mike has his hand up.
Okay, I, um, that, that's not coming up for me. I'm, wait a minute.
Click on the pa- participants at the bottom, please?
Yes, I did.
And then attendees at the top, the second tab at the top of that panel.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's do this. Um, we'll go to Mike first. Commissioner Kirshner?
Okay, I think, uh, am I unmuted now?
Yeah, we hear you, Mike.
Okay, good. Good, thank you. All right, I, I just would like to offer, uh, on behalf of Commissioners Paradiso and Commissioners Thomas, our support for the DORA. At our May twenty-eighth board session, we voted unanimously to offer a letter of support to the City of Tiffin for the pending designated outdoor refreshment area program. Um, we know that the, um, businesses in downtown need a little bit of a spark, and hopefully this will help them with that. The only caveat we have in discussions with the courts is that we're asking, um, that the, the, uh, actual Justice Center property, the grass, be omitted from the DORA always. Um, and that, um, from, uh, until five o'clock during weeks, Monday through Friday, that we don't use, um, the area surrounding the courthouse. Anytime after five o'clock, every day of the week, and all weekend, no one has a concern about that. But with the pivot court that's going on and some of the, uh, hearings that are happening, some of them regarding drug use and alcohol use, uh, during the day, we would respectfully request that the property, uh, including the sidewalks around the Justice Center, not be used until five o'clock, uh, during the week, and, uh, that the, the actual land, the grass area around the courthouse not be used at all. But we're in full support of your DORA, except for those two caveats. Thank you, President Forrest.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirshner. Does anybody have any questions for the Commissioner? Uh, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner Kirshner. I was semi-involved in twenty-nineteen in this, uh, DORA proposal, and I understood Law Director Howard said it was all or nothing. So to exclude the green grass of the Justice Center from this current ordinance twenty-seventy-five, I would have to defer to Law Director Howard to see if we can add, subtract to ordinance twenty-seventy-five at this time.
Well, I, I believe, uh, I believe Commissioner Jones, if I'm correct, that private property can be exempt, anyone who wants to exempt any property that they own can exempt it from the DORA by virtue of your proposal. So the county would be, would be considered private property owner, and they would exempt the area other than the sidewalk around the courthouse. I don't think any, any change needs to be made.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Commissioner Kirshner, I kind of followed you there, but I guess it would be my understanding that to make any changes that the judges wanted to do should have been done before this twenty-seventy-five was written and presented as, as it is.
Well, the judges didn't have any opportunity to make any changes before it was written.
Law Director?
Yeah, uh, let, let me address this issue. Yeah, let, let me address this issue. Commissioner Kirshner is correct in that what the DORA does, it establishes the boundaries for the, the DORA district. And then each individual property within that district, like a individual private property owner, for example, like he was referring to, or in this case, the, the county commissioner's property that they own and they control, should have the right to control the activities on their, their property. Just because the led, the, the council says that you're in a DORA district doesn't mean that we can dictate what goes on individual properties. Saying that, that it, it might clarify if the ordinance would address the Justice Center property, and we may want to consider that for a, a future DORA, because as you know, this DORA is being proposed just for this calendar year. And for it to continue, there'd have to be new legislation passed by council going through the same process this fall. So for now, what I'm hearing from the commissioners is that they would like to have certain restrictions on property that they control, and the city would honor that. We would, now, there has to be appropriate signage so that the, the, the public knows that they are not allowed on their property with a DORA drink at certain times, and our police would have to understand the restrictions that were placed on it. So I think we can cooperate during this year and accomplish what the commissioners and the judges would like for the Justice Center property.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The three judges and the three county commissioners had months and months to share their views, and I don't recall any of the six of them doing it, but as soon as Law Director said this can be controlled by signage, then that makes total sense to me.
Very good.
Yes. Yes. The commissioners have made, a hundred is probably too much, but many comments regarding the DORA. We've been involved from the very beginning. If, if you would pay attention to the commissioners' meetings, you would hear a number of conversations regarding the DORA. The commissioners nor the judges were ever presented with the, uh, the language regarding the DORA in advance of the DORA being submitted for approval. What I don't want to do is have this come across as being any type of a contentious situation. We are very collaborative in this. We want to cooperate. We want this to happen. We want to go along with the city as much as possible. There was some concern amongst the judges regarding alcohol on the property, so that's why we asked for that exemption. It sounds as though at least one councilman feels that we didn't do this correctly, and if that's the case, I apologize for the communication, but we have had this conversation many times with the mayor, with city council members, and are in full agreement that we should approve the DORA with the one caveat, and I had no idea it was going to cause this controversy.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Kirshner, for explaining that, because I have enough time keeping up with city council, let alone trying to monitor county commissioners. So evidently, you did your homework, so thank you.
Okay, Mike, I would suggest that, um, you know, that, I understand you don't have time to pay attention to all the meetings, but then, in that case, please don't make the comment that we haven't done anything about it over the last fifteen months.
Okay, Councilman Jones, this is the last time. We need to move on.
Okay, that, that's what I meant to say. No, thank you, Mr. President. That's what I meant to say, Councilman Kirshner, that I spoke out of turn. I didn't realize you guys did all that. Thank you.
It's Commissioner Kirshner, too, by the way. All right. Thanks, Commissioner Kirshner, for being with us. We appreciate it. Kathy, I still can't come up, the names aren't popping up here. Can you, can you pull the next one up for me?
Or Mr. Bryce Riggs.
Okay. Bryce, go ahead.
Hello, Council President Foote. Hey, it's Bryce Riggs. I was a part of the Business Handsmanship Committee a couple of years ago when this idea was floated out and worked with council on the last application. I'm excited to serve as the next Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. And for me, I've been fairly proud of the Tiffin and Seca County community for being really forward-thinking and really working hand-in-hand with the local community and the business community to move our community forward. Every business owner that I have spoken with throughout, when I walk around, they're really excited about the DORA and the opportunities that it, that it brings to the local community and allows them to expand their offerings. I really see this as an easy opportunity for council to continue to be a strong partner for the local community and the business community, to offer this tool for these businesses, especially during the pandemic. So I would urge the council to support this proposed application for the DORA that's being discussed, and I'm really excited for the future of our community.
Thank you. Thanks, Bryce. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Riggs? All right, thank you. Moving ahead, Kathy, can you pull up the next one for me, please?
Mr. David Zach.
Mr. Zach, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President Foote. Just want to make a couple of comments. I, too, am very, very much in support of this initiative, as is our organization. When it came around the first time, we, we shared our, our strong feelings that the communities it had been in, it had a strong benefit in terms of quality of life. There were no problems. The businesses liked it, and as we've seen since then, more and more communities have joined and also had no problems. But I think that all being said, the point I've been stressing in individual conversations over the last couple of weeks is that we are in an extraordinary situation. We just found out recently that, that a county business, so New Regal and Saft has, has closed, and these restaurants and bars that we have in downtown Tiffin have not chosen the restrictions on the number of people that can be in their establishment, and they are extremely hard-hit. And we feel it is a moral imperative to do anything that we can to provide additional space for their customers and allow them to survive this incredibly difficult time. I think we've all thought about the, the challenging health crisis that we've had, and, and we know about the, the deaths and the cases that there've been, and we've all heard about, you know, the, the economic impact of what we've been experiencing. But I think it's important to note that the folks at the Laird Arcade Brewery, and MST Pub and Grub, and the Renaissance, and the Bear's Den, and Fort Ball Pizza Palace, and Reno's Pizza and Pasta are huge fans of this and really want this to help their business. And Clover Club, and the Chandelier, and the Elks, and the American Legion, they all want it. So we, we really want to support these businesses. We're not doing this for us. We're asking you to please consider putting this in place, knowing that you can recall it at any time if there are any problems. But with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Council President, and thank you and every member of council for your consideration. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, David. Any questions for Mr. Zach? Okay. Kathy, could you present the next person, please?
Victor.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Sure. Give us your name, please.
This is Victor Perez over by Six's Corners. I wanted to tell the city council, thank you for your work on this, and the commissioners as well. I think it's well thought out. I, I think if it's accurate, this is probably the time to do it, but I, too, as a family man with children, I want to address the concerns that this might cause problems for our city. With two young children, I, I think the opposite. I think, I think there's fears and concerns, but ignores the, the idea that some of us are actually responsible. The concern that some of the students are going to run around drinking downtown, that could already happen. You, you don't need DORA to do that. It's just as easy to go to Six's Corners, buy a case of beer, and run around town and do that. This supports the businesses like the Laird Arcade, the Renaissance, Washington Street Outfitters, and realistically, to do what people think with a DORA cup is not that easy. You have to go back to the establishment. It's, it's not super cheap either, so you have to plan your, your day out. I, I think that it offers an opportunity to help some of our businesses, bring some of our shoppers out, see some of our businesses, and let families be together. And, and I think if done responsibly, it could help generate, you know, a better environment for our town. I know the concerns about what may or may not happen in terms of, you know, what it could cause. I, I think those are just, I think we, we need to understand people in Tiffin can be responsible. That's all my comment.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Perez? Thank you for your comments. Next one, Kathy.
Eric.
Okay, Eric.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, council members, mayor, and Mr. Zach and Mr. Perez, thank you very much for your comments. I'd like to build on those and the support of the, of the DORA. Honestly, I see the other businesses benefiting just as greatly, if not more, than the Laird Arcade Brewery, our neighbors. We, we want this more for the community than we do for ourselves. I would like that to be known foremost. But I would like to reiterate that, yes, this is something that we see, something as a benefit for our customers and for our community and neighboring businesses. Yes, it will benefit us in the long run, but I believe in the immediate future it will benefit them with a more rapid return. And I think that this is something that is, something that we are able to give a piece to help with in the, a piece of the pie of helping rebuild our community after the shutdown. So this is just giving, allowing us to be able to give something back to the community is kind of the way I view it for us. And I know that there is the talk about the fears of people running rampant, like Mr. Perez said. That is something I also see as not being an issue because of the caliber of customers that we bring and draw to our downtown businesses. I believe that they would be responsible, and I believe, and wholeheartedly, that there is actually no evidence to support those fears, given any of the other communities that have done this, and I think it's just the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
I believe we lost Rich again.
Looks like we did. Councilman Shuff, you may have to take over since you're the pro tem until Rich can join us. You're on mute, Tyler. You got to take yourself off of there.
All right, I'm back. I don't see any other hands raised in the attendees section. Was there anyone else from the public that would like to weigh in on this? Amy Reinhardt, I see she has her hand up. If we could activate Amy, please.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Perfect. So just, just a couple of things, just food for thought. So, you know, originally, when we first started looking at a DORA last year, there were twelve or thirteen different communities that had a DORA. At this point, there are twenty-seven different communities around the state of Ohio that have a DORA. And I know that when our police chief was originally taking a look at this last year and considering whether or not additional police patrols and those types of things were going to be necessary, he discovered with the, the communities that he did call that there were not any issues. And I have not seen any of the twenty-seven communities that have a DORA in place need to shut it down because of partying in the streets or anything crazy like that. This is really on multiple facets here. First, I think, you know, this is an opportunity to support our small businesses. Walk in, get a beer, go into Reno's and pick up a pizza, and sit outside with your family and enjoy the community at the same time supporting our small businesses. So when you take a look at, you know, nationally, there, the suggestion is that forty percent of small businesses that are restaurants and bars are actually slated to close as a result of the COVID closures. And so I think it's, it's really important to make sure that we are doing everything that we can here as a community to support our small businesses and to make sure that they are viable in our community. You know, having the space for them outside is vitally important because they have such a reduced capacity right now inside, and especially when you're taking a, a look at the lab and the Renaissance who don't have any other options for food. All they do sell is alcohol. You know, being able to purchase a drink and sit outside with your family, I think, is a great option. And please bear in mind, you know, initially, when we were talking about putting a DORA in place, that was the purpose of it. It was to allow for outdoor seating so that, one, it increases community, just because we have people sitting outside, and two, you know, it's, it's, it's just a great way to support our small businesses in a time when they truly are struggling. And as David mentioned, you know, with Sauce closing, that's just a little bit of a shock to everybody, I think, but we don't want, of all the hard work that we have put in as a community, you know, people investing in downtown, businesses opening in downtown, all the people that are working so hard to make downtown a destination, we don't want to see all of that fail because we don't have any opportunity to support these businesses. And I think this is just one of those great opportunities as a community to, to support them. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Amy. Did anyone have any questions for Mrs. Reinhardt? Thank you, Amy. Is there anybody else from the attending public here? I see we still got about twenty attendees. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak up? Please raise your hand. Not, not seen any others? Is there any comments here from the council? Any points and anybody I'd like to touch on or anything that kind of struck a chord with you as far as the attendees go in their comments? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes, Mr. President. I, I actually, as, as you know, it was a no vote, and so I've got kind of a long statement here because I've had a lot of comments and questions, and so some of this has been answered, but please bear with me. I want to go back through it again so that people that kept calling me understand the rationale and where I'm coming from. The easy path for me would be to vote no, since I know it's enough votes to pass it without me. However, I gave my word that I would support this time, and I would like to tell this community why. I was a small business owner for over thirty-five years. Most people think you have it made, but it can be very challenging even with the best of times. I was located downtown for ten years before moving just off downtown to Frost Parkway. I barely survived September eleventh in oh one, barely survived the economic downturn in oh eight, oh nine, and so I'm very glad I'm not fighting this battle for a third time, but my friends and fellow small business owners are. I understand their fears as they struggle to hold on. I want to explain a few issues. Mistakenly, people think all restaurants and food places have outside seating. This is not true. Ohio Vice Code states that if you have an outdoor seating, it must be fenced in, and for example, we have TJ Willie's and Wall Street Bourbon Grill. Most do not have that capability or allows them to add extra seating outside to help with social distancing constraints without the fencing. I have also been asked why it's such a large area, not just at the businesses. Again, the ORC restricts this, but or creates an area. The store is for six months. It is a good way to give it a try without making it permanent. Am I crazy about the days and hours? No. The restaurants are open all of these hours, and most just happen to sell alcohol. This is a quote stated a few months ago with the Dollar General, "We should always try for a win-win situation." In January, when we relook at continuing DORA, my hope is that we will back off of Sunday and Monday totally, the start time after four, other days to allow for students not to be around during school hours and after school. So my calls and emails said against DORA, especially the day and times I just mentioned. Thank you for listening to my very long comments. It will be a yes vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yanatuno. Thanks for clarifying some of that, and I've also received some of those calls and conversations as well, but thank you for giving us your piece and input. Councilman Jones, make sure you unmut yourself, please.
Thank you, Council President. You opened the door, and Councilwoman Yanatuna did her speech. I didn't know when I could do mine, but I'll do mine, and I'll try to hold it under five minutes. I am going to be the voice of the people who spoke up in twenty nineteen when DORA was proposed and got defeated four to three. If we choose to implement a DORA starting at four PM and ending at eleven PM, this proposal should not be hard to pass for nine days a month. Twenty nineteen, I said it as a citizen. Twenty twenty, I'm saying as a councilperson. The third, third- The third Thursday of the month, four to 11:00. Friday and Saturdays, four to 11:00. 30 or 31 days per month from 11:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night is not acceptable to the Tiffin residents who spoke up in 2019, may not be able to be heard on Zoom at this meeting. We can still do the tables and chairs, the picnic table concept to allow businesses promote social distancing, but we do not need to do this with an alcoholic drink in our hands, starting at 11:00 AM. I am not against people having a drink at 11:00 AM if they so desire. I feel they should do it in their own home or at one of the businesses that have been fenced in or enclosed structures such as the Elks, the Clover Club, Steiny's Three Oaks, Double Barrel out in Vine Street. A lot of you don't even know where Double Barrel is. The Baird's Den has an enclosed thing. GW's has a back area. It's not enclosed. It's not a patio, just to name a few. Then at four o'clock, enjoy a stroll through downtown Tiffin with a Dora Cup during the proposed nine-day schedule. City Council needs to listen to the people of Tiffin. We've heard loud and clear, we do not want students walking home from school or to the library or to the teen center after school, passing by responsible adults having a beverage on the sidewalks of downtown Tiffin. Let's discuss tips. Training for intervention procedures. I heard Councilman Leopard and Eric Kibler state this was a very good idea that could wait until 2021 to add to the Dora. If this is such a good idea, implement it now in 2020 and not put it off until 2021. I went back to the March 4th, 2019 meeting. This is recorded. Y'all can go back March 14th, 29th, when the Dora got defeated four to three. I heard Councilman Roberts talk about all the good things that have happened in downtown Tiffin, and he said, "Without booze." I heard Councilman Leopard state the same thing. We have done great things in downtown Tiffin without a drink in our hands. In the same meeting, Councilwoman Yana Tuno stated she was glad the program got scaled back from seven days a week. The other version was for 32.7 acres. This one is for 48.9 acres, a 48% increase in the area. The other version was for 40 hours a week. This one is for 84 hours a week. 210% increase in hours. Expanding the door, stand corrected, expanding the acres and hours that got voted down in the past is not a good way to achieve a Dora. Nine days a month from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM is a way to achieve a Dora at this time. I will stand down.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Councilman Jones. And then just, just to address one of your comments that you had said earlier about the majority of Tiffin and everybody not wanting it. I don't know if I necessarily agree with you on that. Some of the polling that's been done, it was pretty one-sided on that, but I, that's just my opinion. Anyone else that has a comment? Councilwoman Boyle, please make sure you unmute yourself.
Yeah, no, just to address a few of those items that Councilman Jones mentioned about kids walking home from school. I'm not certain that, I think that's a huge assumption that there's going to be drunk people having a beer at 3:00 in the afternoon, 2:00 in the afternoon, whenever kids are walking home from school. Also, I think in general, there's just a lot of assumptions with, with how Dora is going to go. And I, I just think that's a little unfair, considering we've never implemented this before. Additionally, you hear many of the TSET members talk about how many other communities that are so similar to Tiffin that haven't had any issues regarding that. To me, it just, it doesn't, it's a little excessive to be making some of the assumptions that that Councilman Jones has. But in my opinion, I think that this will be a great testing period for Dora. And, you know, as we've stated, at the end of December, you know, throughout this time period, if there's things that we would like to scale back after truly experiencing it and not assuming how things are going to go, we can do that as a group. But I personally, I think right now we should proceed as, as is and you know, I'm excited to see how this transpires.
Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Boyle. I see Councilman Perry has his hand raised. Make sure you unmute yourself, Dan.
Yeah, I'd have a couple of comments. I don't foresee any of the bars giving somebody that's really drunk a Dora drink and putting their name on the line, you know, for them to go out into the public and, you know, be super drunk and making a fool of themselves. And they also have other laws that apply to them. You know, you can still get a public intoxication with a Dora Cup. So they're not invincible just because they're within the Dora zone. I, I am very in favor of this. I think the businesses need to spark right now. I'll, I'll be a yes vote for it as well, so.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Perry. Mayor Motts, what are your thoughts?
Um, yes, this was my proposal, so obviously I'm in favor of it, but I just want to point out a couple of things. We need to keep in mind that this is a trial run that by the time it passes is literally going to be in place for about five months. Council then can make any of the changes that they need based off of how the trial run goes at the end of this year. I guess I'm, I'm almost bothered by Councilman Jones' comment and a few of the others that I've heard that they think that this is going to turn into a big drunk party in downtown Tiffin because 27 other communities in the state of Ohio have passed a Dora. 27, that from cities as large as Columbus and Cincinnati to small ones like Port Clinton, Sylvania. So we're basically saying that we do not think residents in Tiffin, Ohio are responsible enough to, to drink with one beverage in their hand per person. And to me, that's just shocking because it has been successful in all 27 communities that have implemented this from big major cities to little villages that are a third or fourth the size of Tiffin. None of them have had problems. None of them have repealed their Doras. None of them have cut back at hours. In fact, most of them have expanded and grown their Dora. So here we are saying that we think Tiffanites are not responsible enough to do this in the way that every other city that has implemented a Dora has done so and done so successfully. So I'm a little bothered by us saying that we do not trust our residents enough to do Dora successfully. So that's the first thing I want to say. The police chief called all the communities. When Chief Stevens originally heard of this idea, I'm not going to speak for him, but he was not in favor of it. After he called all of the communities, talking to police officers. Chief Stevens then realized there are no issues. They're not having any increased police issues. They're not having any increases to overtime. They're not putting extra patrols on. They're not having problems anywhere with Dora. So chief then changed his position after doing research. We just need to remember, this is about helping our businesses. We're going to see people come to Tiffin because we know we've got a very active downtown scene right now with a lot of great businesses. But those individuals who come to Tiffin knowing that they can go to the Renaissance and take a walk downtown at one of the outdoor parks or that they can walk to a couple of spots with a drink in their hand, they're also going to hear about other businesses in the Tiffin community. I'm sure that Eric Kibler at, at the lab probably lets customers know that, hey, we're not the only brewery in town. Did you know there's a second brewery out on Wall Street? The same thing with the Empire. They're probably going to tell their customers, because you can't eat every meal at the Empire, that there is this place, you know, there's Renaissance across the street that Dave Spriggin runs. People will find out about more businesses in Tiffin. We're in this together in Tiffin, Ohio. We're trying to help every business. And I think Dora is going to be a huge part of helping continue to grow this community. It has been done successfully in 27 other communities with no issues. I just don't see why we can't try it here in Tiffin. And if it's not successful, it's not successful. It will automatically expire at the end of this year and we just don't implement it. But at the end of the day, we've got an obligation to do anything that we can to help our businesses. And with it estimated that up to 40% of bars and restaurants are going to close, to me, that's not acceptable. We need to do our part, get that percentage as low as we can here in Tiffin, Ohio, knowing we're going to lose some, but helping out our businesses in any way that we possibly can. And Dora is one of those, especially the businesses that have been hit hardest by this pandemic. So let's continue to be creative here in Tiffin, Ohio. Help our businesses do this simple five-month trial run. And at the end of the day, we reassess at the end of this year. And maybe we do have to scale back some hours. Maybe we do scale back the size of this. But let's at least give our businesses a fighting chance by passing it this time, giving us a five-month trial and moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree with a lot of your comments. I remember two or three years ago when we were in Columbus, we were hearing about the store program through our Main Street accreditation, through that membership, through that group. At that point, there was maybe three or four communities trying this thing out. It was kind of new, on the cutting edge. Then by the time we looked at it, got our legislation, it was up to 14. Now we're up to 27, but with the other communities not having many issues, I just, I always think of Tiffin being one of those leading communities or one of the ones that the other communities look at. I mean, I think we're pretty forward-thinking and I think we should at least try it for a couple of months. Like you said, right now the businesses need help. They're struggling worse than what they have in a long time. And it seems like the overwhelming majority of the businesses are asking for this, and it is only in the commercial district, only in the historical district. It's not, it's not in people's backyards or sidewalks. It's in the commercial historic downtown districts. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I said most of the Tiffin residents were against this, I did not mean to say that. I'll have to go back and check my notes. I don't recall saying that. But no, I did not mean most of the Tiffin residents were against this. Eric Kibler is joining us tonight. He left me a voicemail. I called him back. Him and I had a nice 10-minute conversation. He understood myself to say that some of the downtown businesses were against that. I didn't correct him, but I said I was not against Dora completely. And I don't recall saying any downtown business was against that, so I tried to explain that to Mr. Kibler. Y'all are correct. I myself called 11 cities. None of them had a problem. I didn't realize it was up to 27 cities now. If none of them have a problem, that's the whole thing. And even though I did my three, three and a half minute dissertation on the third reading, I will have some other comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Is there anyone else that has any comments or anything for the good of the order? All right, well, let's, let's move on here.
Tyler, you have to officially close the public hearing then if there are no more comments, just to give you a heads up.
If there's no further comments, we will close the public meeting here at 7:40 PM.
Tyler, I'm back.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. I apologize. I don't know. This technology scares me, but does everyone have an opportunity to read the minutes from our previous meeting? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very, very minor. So minor, I probably shouldn't bring it up, and I don't want any to think that I'm nitpicking because to type up all these minutes, I can't do two things at once, let alone type up all these minutes. But the minutes from 6:120, page 3460, it goes down, talked about a certain ordinance, and it should have read 2072 versus 072. Just below that, in the next paragraph, it had July 9th. It should have been June the 9th. And again, I'm not nitpicking. I'm not saying I can do a better job. Lord knows I can't do that. And I just wanted the public and the city council people to know that I read these minutes before we come to the meeting. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other corrections, additions, or dilations? Okay, seeing none, thought objection, the minutes will stand approved. Committee reports. Finance Committee, Constable Gilligan.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Constable Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Personnel Labor Relations, Constable Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilwoman Yana Tuno.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Constable Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Shuff.
No report to give at this time, Mr. President, but we did have a meeting last Monday, and I will be submitting those minutes to the clerk. If anybody would like to read them, they'll be available in the office.
All right, thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, I'd also like to remind everybody, we have a special meeting scheduled for June 22nd at 7:00. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss the Dora and ordinance 20-65. What are reports to the officers? His mayor honor, his honor, Aaron D. Motts.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have no idea in the midst of all of that, what happened to my notes with my report. I don't know if they slid off here and went under my desk or where they went, so I'm going to have to go off of memory, I guess, during my report here because I have no idea what happened to it.
Down the river.
Yeah, evidently. It literally, when I started, things was on top of my staff. And the only thing I can think of is, in the midst of me picking up and moving everything, the note cards fall somewhere and went underneath. Just a second, let me look down. Nope, I, I have no idea. Oh, there it is. All right, I've got it. It was underneath the chair. I thought maybe the City Hall gremlins ate it. So, all right. I want to thank everyone, city council members for calling in reports, but also the members of our Public Works Department and Police and Fire. It was an extremely busy week last week with the storm that we had here in the community that went through with the straight-line winds. I know we had winds clocked that, I believe they said 72 miles an hour here in Tiffin. It was just incredible, the amount of damage that was done. But I think, you know, looking at things with how high those winds were, being some of the strongest winds that we've had in several years, shows the good job that our, our two foresters do at keeping trees in the community as trimmed as possible and removeable of the dead trees or trees with issues. Because I can remember the first year that I was mayor, we had a heck of a straight-line wind come through here and just demolished a ton of trees throughout the community in Hedges Boyer Park. And this was nothing compared to that, even though the winds were comparable. But lots of overtime, especially at the Public Works Department, as they were in clearing streets, trying to assist AEP with the removal of as many trees as possible so that AEP could get in and have power restored along with spectrum. So just hats off to everyone for a job well done. There's still a lot of work to be done as far as picking things up. A reminder to the public, the Water Pollution Control Center site is open for a few more days with later hours until 6:00 PM for the drop-off of brush and other similar items. We're doing that to give folks more of an opportunity to get things hauled out there and also give our guys a chance to, to try to get everything cleared. Last week also, on the 10th, we reopened a lot of facilities at our parks, playgrounds, volleyball courts, basketball courts, et cetera, reopened on June the 10th. They've been pretty heavily used. We did put up the volleyball nets, however, with the basketball hoops. Bryce Coon informed me that it's still considered a contact sport, basketball, so they have not placed up all of the basketball hoops because they're trying to limit the number of people who are on the courts at a time and keep it to where individuals are shooting hoops versus actually playing games of basketball, because it was listed according to the Parks Department on one of the restricted uses yet. Shooting hoops is okay, however, actually playing a physical game, since it's considered a contact sport, the state is still prohibiting that at this time. So just a clarification point in case any of you get phone calls. Speaking of parks, we are at least at this time set to go with our fireworks display on Friday, September the 4th at Hedges Boyer Park. The rain date will be Saturday, September the 5th. That is Labor Day weekend. It's, of course, alternative at this time, depending on state regulations and guidelines and also what the local health department says we can and cannot do. and also what the local health department says we can and cannot do. But at least at this time, the Tiffin fireworks display is set for Friday, September the 4th at dusk. We'll check closer to the time to see what sunset time is predicted, probably sometime between 9:00 and 10:00 PM out at Hedges Boyer Park. Friday, September 4th, the rain date will be September the 5th. Couple of other items. Circle K announced today their plans to build a new $4.1 million facility here in Tiffin that would be located in front of Rural King at the empty outlaw. Their plans to start construction here fairly soon. And then, to my knowledge, they will close down the very small cramped gas station that they currently have in front of the Tiffin Mall. We all know anyone who has used that. It's extremely tight to get in and out of it. It's a very small building. They're going to build one of these new flagship-style Circle K's that is kind of state-of-the-art, if you will, with all the bells and whistles out in front of Rural King that will have much more rooms that folks can get in and out of it and that. So we're happy to hear that. I want to congratulate, if he's still here, Bryce Riggs, who the Chamber of Commerce selected, I think it was last week, to become their new president and CEO. So congratulations to Bryce. And then I know we talked about it in Committee of the Whole, but for those of the public that were not here, financially, we are beginning to improve from the hole that we were in. For the first two months of the COVID crisis, being April and May, city revenues were down about $600,000 total for those two months. It has peaked up this month, and right now, we're down about $500,000 in revenue versus the 600 last month. We are hoping things will continue to improve as tax returns continue to come in. So we're optimistic that from here on out, we should improve unless there is a second wave of this virus and additional shutdowns by the state of Ohio. So we're hoping we're through the worst right now and that as things continue to reopen and folks are back to work, city finances continue to improve. And then I want to talk a little bit about the plans with City Hall. We had a department head meeting this morning, and all systems are a go to reopen municipal buildings to the public coming up on July the 6th. We're going to do the first month by appointment only for many of the offices that interact directly with the public that do not have, that require meetings face-to-face. That way, we don't have a long line of people, for example, at the zoning office, standing in line next to one another, crammed in that small hallway. So we're going to do by appointment only for at least the first month or so. It's a little different scenario in finance since they have the outdoor waiting area and they also have Plexiglas installed between the individuals in the finance office and the public. So that will be a little different. But at least for the offices that require the face-to-face meetings that just don't have much in the way of a waiting room, we will be opening to the public for, by appointment-only meetings come July the 6th. But we're excited to kind of get back into the swing of things here at the city. Everyone, of course, has been working, zoning office engineers, et cetera, have been issuing permits either via email and fax instead of directly. It's all worked out very well. Same thing for our office here at City Hall. We've been conducting all sorts of meetings either via Zoom or go-to-meeting or conference call lines. So business has not slowed down, but it will be nice to start meeting face-to-face and seeing individuals one-on-one here again in the very near future at City Hall. I do know as part of the discussion this morning, we talked about city council meetings since ultimately you all have the final decision on your council meetings. I know Brent and I discussed it with Dale. Part of the issue, and I know Brent's going to chime in here, we're not 100% convinced that we feel comfortable with council going back to their meetings yet. And it's not necess, meetings together yet. It's not necessarily because we don't feel that council can be in there to meet. It's the fact that we do not have much capacity at all for the public. As you know, council meetings have to be open to the public. And right now, with the regulations, we would only have a maximum capacity of five to six individuals that would be permitted in the council room. So by the time you allow for the newspaper reporter in, we're down to only four to five total members from the public who would be permitted in. And the concern of that, and I can kind of let Brent also speak to it, is the fact that if it's a public meeting and you're drastically limiting access, it's really not a public meeting at that point. We've discussed other options. There really aren't any because a couple of the other larger facilities here in Tiffin are not opening to the public. The couple that are, unless council's going to spend two to three hours after the meeting sanitizing the entire space, that would not work either. So we're not going to send in Public Works, for example, to spend two or three hours on overtime dollars cleaning an entire facility down. So I guess the kind of advice that Brent and I and the city administrator have is we would like council to at least consider giving it another month or two before they meet in public or meet in person. We can continue with meetings as they are via Zoom, which I think is getting great participation. We've had a lot of from the public in the attendee room listening. I saw tonight on here that at one point, we were up to almost 150 people watching on Facebook. So there's a lot of people that have been able to watch this. But really, at the end of the day, city council, it's going to be your decision. You'll have to decide what you want to do with your meetings. Just be aware that there is a capacity limit on that room upstairs of probably only five to six members of the public due to the regulations that we must follow here at the city that were issued by the state.
Councilman Shuff, do you have a comment?
Yeah, would it be possible to meet out at the old Kroger like we did while City Hall was getting renovated?
Last we checked, it's not open. The police department checked on it, wanting to do training there, and they were told that it is not open currently and will let be open for a while.
Councilman Jones?
Guess since we're interrupting the mayor, Councilwoman Yanatuno mentioned two weeks ago in a very clear statement, I mentioned the old Krogers or ESE, whatever y'all call it. And she said it'd be a burden on them to spend an extra two hours cleaning up after us. So yes, going out to the old Krogers was not a good idea on my part.
Mayor?
Brent, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, the one comment is that I need to remind you that there currently is an order from the State Health Department that applies to us and everyone in the state that there should not be private or public gatherings of more than 10 people. And so, and we, as our local law enforcement, are a part of that enforcement of those orders. So we need to comply with those orders because we're part of our effort to try to limit the transmission of potentially of COVID-19 and to enforce those orders. So we should lead by example. Also, that order, I believe, goes through to the 1st of July. It may be extended, so we'll just have to wait and see. But for now, my recommendation is, given what we know, that you continue at least another month following what is your statutory right. As you know, the law was changed earlier this spring to allow for these type of meetings. And so you have every right and you comply with the public meeting law to have meetings this way. And I would add, the mayor said there may be more people listening and watching these meetings than before. So you're not getting the same kind of in-person participation, but you are getting participation from the public and they can contact you in between meetings and tell you their thoughts.
Thank you. Councilman Perry?
I actually did have a comment today that they requested that, or asked if we could keep doing the Facebook Live when we did go back to chambers. I don't know if that was possible still or... I know it's easier through Zoom, but somebody made a comment today to me about that. So just thought I'd bring it up.
Danny, I'd love to do that. I'm just not good enough with technology. So we're going to have to discuss that with Kathy Moore, Brian Rupp, and...
Tom Fretz.
Yeah, Tom Fretz, to see what the capabilities are of our technology in the council room. But I love the idea. I, to me, the more people who are out there watching our meetings live or even going back in the days and weeks afterwards and watching these meetings is only good. Even if they disagree with the decisions that we're making here in council or the proposals that I'm making, I'd at least rather have them listen to the discussion and hear how we've arrived at it and what we're discussing. Because a lot of the times, we're getting questions on social media or an email that are answered during the meetings. And if people are watching that, I think if we cut back on a lot of it and hope explain to them how council functions, how city government functions. So I love the idea of keeping things on Facebook. We just have to talk with our technology folks here and see what exactly we're capable of up in that council room or what technology we could purchase that would make that council room compatible for it. We all know that we've kind of got a financial hole right now because of the COVID pandemic. But I would like to think if it's a simple, you know, if it's a $50, $100 webcam and, you know, we can run it through whatever, that we can do it. Because I love the idea, the more people that know what we're doing here and why we're doing it, the better.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Law Director Howard answered my concern here. I was going to call one of the three county commissioners and ask them how that's working. They rotate their meetings to the villages, et cetera, and et cetera. I can only anticipate that's going over very well. And I still like the idea of us going out to one of the parks or one of the open areas and invite the public. But based on what Law Director Howard said, if it's 10 or more people, and I know Tom Fretz can get over somehow with the microphones, et cetera, et cetera, but if we're restricted with 10 people, I'm going to drop my park and outside meetings. Thank you.
Law Director, do you have? Okay. Does anybody else have a comment? Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Another month of meeting virtually will give me more time to fit back into my non-stretchy dress pants. So I'm in favor of that. But I would very much like to see, I thoroughly enjoyed the open discussion and the dialogue with the community today during Dora. I would like to see oral communication reinstated. You know, we have the very skilled Kathy Moore. You know, she can handle the hand-raising and everything else, but that's something I've missed having is chances to, more chances to dialogue with the public.
Okay. Anyone else? So consensus is, we, in listening to the law director, we're going to be looking at another month of doing our meetings via Zoom. Anybody object to that? Okay. Don't keep on this path. Mayor, do you have anything else to report?
No, Mr. President. That completes what I have to report this evening, and we'll have more July 6th, the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. President. Maybe you moved on and it's too late. I did have a question for the mayor, but if it's too late, then I'll hold it for another time.
Well, it's all right. Go ahead, ask your question.
Okay. I was going to address this to the mayor, but I'm going to bring Councilman Perry into it because I know I'm going to sound like a broken record. And he sounded like a broken record when he won the fireworks on July 4th. July 4th, I got tired of hearing him say that. And maybe I'm getting tired of hearing myself say this, but the fireworks on 9/4, rain date of 9/5, and I'm going to say $25,000. How are we paying $25,000 for fireworks if we're $486,262 in arrears? That's a good question for the public and for my benefit.
Appreciate that question, Councilman Jones, but I think that discussion was already had during our council meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we made it clear between the council members that we wanted to have fireworks so the public had something to look forward to. So I'm not going to restate everything that was already said. Council was pretty clear in the direction that they gave the administration that night.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. We did discuss that. The overwhelming majority of the council people wanted to delay it. But I still don't have an answer of how we're going to pay this $25,000. I sound like a broken record, and you're going to hear this broken record until someone gives me an answer of where $25,000 is coming from.
Well, if I can, if I can add, if I can jump in here, Mayor, I think most of the money is going to, we're going to get donations for the bulk of the funds to begin with. We normally do. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, if that's the case, I'll stand down. I didn't hear any donations from the community or foundations, et cetera, and et cetera. I know we discussed that two weeks ago. Don't get me wrong, but up till tonight, at whatever time it is, 8:02, I didn't hear of asking for donations for the fireworks. If that's...
Well, we've already had, we've already had people volunteer sizable sums of money, indicated that they would donate to this, so...
Well, thank you for that update.
I'm very confident that we can raise most of the money privately.
Thank you for that update. I will stand down.
Okay. Director Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard?
Yes, Mr. President. To clarify the special meeting purpose, and I know this is a part of the notice that council members receive and the public will receive, but to clarify, it's not just to discuss the Dora ordinance, which is ordinance 20-65, but it will be read by title for the third time, and there will be a vote on passage of that ordinance. So just make sure that, you know, everybody in council understands that that's the specific purpose of that meeting, and the public should know that, too.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Anyone have any questions for the law director? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have mayor's request for legislation number 20-31. Municipalities receive federal funding from SB 310.
Mayor's request for legislation 20-31 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for this evening's meeting.
Mayor's request for legislation number 30-32. It was just added this evening. Legislation for subcontractors for city income tax purposes.
I didn't get a copy.
Okay, yeah, you would like me to read it, Mr. President?
Yes, please, please.
Says your council members, "Please consider allowing the city to draw up legislation for subcontractors' information for city tax purposes. Law Director, Finance Director, and I are happy to meet with the appropriate committee to discuss this request, respectfully, Aaron D. Muntz, Mayor."
What was the number of that?
30, I'm sorry, 20-32.
20-32. Mayor's request for legislation 20-32 will be directed to the Finance Committee.
And then I have Finance Director's request for legislation number F20-30 to amend the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 in order to increase expenses in legal services-labor in the mayor's budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F20-30 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for this evening's meeting.
And Finance Director's request for legislation number F20-31 to amend the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 in order to increase expenses in dues and fees in the police department budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F20-31 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Legislation has been prepared for this evening's meeting.
And then I also just received a petition for alley vacation from Doug and Donna Cook. And let me read this one second. They're owners of the property abutting in alley in the second ward of the city of Tiffin, and they want to vacate an alley being a 12-foot wide alley running north-south between Lot 6 on the east and Lot 7 on the west, and all in Block 3, First Highland Edition, commencing at the easterly extension of the northerly right-of-way of Reserve A, also being the southerly line of Lot 6 and 7 of Block 3 of First Highland Edition and running northerly and terminating at the southerly right-of-way of First Avenue.
This request will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee. Councilman Leopard?
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. Thank you. We are now under motions. Does anyone have a motion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that we table ordinance 2075 until approximately September 2020. The reason for the motion is, I don't think we have enough information to make a decision on a 10% reduction for towns, villages, et cetera, and et cetera. And until we get the full report, I think we should table 2075, and I have a lot more information to share on that subject.
All right, we have a motion to table ordinance 2075 until September of 2020. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Any other motions? We're now under resolutions.
Resolution number 20-26, introduced by Ben Gilligan. Resolution affirming compliance with the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act and all applicable regulations and Senate Bill 310 of the 133rd Ohio General Assembly for the city's participation in the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 20-26. Councilman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request that council suspend our three-reading rule and immediately pass Resolution 20-26.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three-reading rule and pass Resolution 20-26. Is there a second? Councilman Shuff.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is the one on, if I read the, I believe you see the ordinance of this resolution, some of this money has to go back to the county, some of the money has to go back to the state, et cetera, et cetera. Wouldn't we be able to keep these dollars if we submitted it and it was for a logical reason?
I don't quite understand your question. The money's coming from one big pot. They're not giving it to us and us giving it to the county and the state.
If I can.
Go ahead.
I can add to this. This is federal money that's coming through the state of Ohio to the counties. And each county, then, the county auditor distributes the money to the various political subdivisions. This resolution is necessary for us to be able to participate in receiving a share of money that's allocated for Seneca County. Once it comes to us, then there are very restricted purposes related to COVID-19. And it is true, Councilman Jones identified this, and if you look in the resolution, we are required to return any money that is, doesn't qualify, and we do not use to reimburse ourselves for qualified expenses. So my expectation is, is that we will receive a sum of money. I can't tell you how much it is, but once we get that, we will report that to you. But there will be eventually an amount that we probably have to return. And this is part of the mechanism to allow that. The state had passed a, or in the process of passing law that sets up the process. So does that answer your question, Councilman Jones?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Thank you, Law Director. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other, any other comments? All right, seeing none, the clerk will call the roll, please, on the suspension.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to nothing. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. Resolution 20-26 passes with a vote of seven to zero. We're now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 20-65, introduced by Tyler Shuff. Ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA, for downtown Tiffin, enacting regulations for the DORA and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-65.
Ordinance number 20-66, introduced by Tyler Shuff. Ordinance approving a one-year extension of the contracts with the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership for Marketing, Communication, and Economic Development Services and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-66. Councilman Shuff.
Muted. Sorry, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Will we pass this under suspension?
Yes.
Like to ask for a council's suspension of ordinance 20-66, please.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend three-reading rule for ordinance 20-66 and immediate passage. Is there a second? Councilwoman Giannatuno.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote, please.
Councilman Leffler.
On the suspension.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. Emergency passes seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. Ordinance 20-66 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-67, introduced by Ben Gilligan, and then amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to decrease expenses in the TAP State Route 18 grant fund in order to balance the fund.
This is the second reading, ordinance 20-67.
Ordinance number 20-69, introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate $1,885 for pool refunds.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-69. Councilman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-69.
We have a motion to suspend the three-reading rule and immediate passage for ordinance 20-69. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason we're passing this as an emergency and skipping the three-reading rule, et cetera, and et cetera, is so that the citizens of Tiffin can get their money back in a timely fashion. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you. Councilman Gilligan.
Sorry, just out of curiosity, did we offer the option to carry over pool memberships to next summer? Or do we just kind of, I think either's fine, or did we just kind of decide, hey, we'll give you back your money?
All right, Mayor, do you have a comment on that?
I know we offered that to shelter rentals. I don't know if Grace offered that for the pool memberships or not. I can find out for you, Councilman Gilligan, but I'm not sure. I know that they offered it for shelters.
I think the refund's a wonderful idea, and I appreciate this being brought to council.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan. Councilman Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Giannatuno.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes. Ordinance 20-69 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-70, introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to make 2020 mid-year budget adjustments to reduce expenses in the general fund.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-70.
Ordinance number 20-71, introduced by Don Giannatuno, ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership to apply to and receive from the Ohio Development Services Agency, Office of Community Development for a small city's community development grant for qualifying projects and allowable administrative expenses, authorizing bidding and executing of contracts as needed, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-71. Councilwoman Giannatuno.
Mr. President, I would like to ask council to suspend the three-reading rule and ask for immediate passage of 20-71.
We have a motion for the suspension of the three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-71. Is there a second? Councilman Shuff.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Giannatuno.
I would just like to mention it's a good use of the CDBG funds, and courts are increasing our trails and paths in Tiffin, and it's making that area a little bit nicer. So it's a nice idea to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? The clerk will call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. Ordinance 20-71 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-72, introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2021, attached here to as a part here of, and directing the Director of Finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor on and before July 20, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-72. Councilman Leffler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we having a public hearing on that, on ordinance 20-72 on July 6?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 20-73, introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to increase expenses in legal services-labor in the mayor's budget by $30,000.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-73. Councilman Gilligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-73.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three-reading rule for ordinance 20-73 and immediate passage. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second that, Mr. President.
I think we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote, please, on the suspension.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Shuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gilligan.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes. Ordinance 20-73 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-74, introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 by $190 increase expenses in dues and fees in the police department budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-74.
Ordinance number 20-75, introduced by Ben Gilligan, ordinance decreasing sewer rates by 10% for all sewer customers for bills from August 1, 2020 through March 15, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-75.
That concludes the ordinance, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is the first reading, ordinance 2075, but when do we, seven city council people, discuss this? Do we wait till the third reading and then talk about it? Or do we talk about it now and keep our thoughts to ourselves?
You can bring up discussion at any time you want. It's your prerogative. Mr. Jones.
I'd like to discuss ordinance 2075 then. Thank you, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Okay, what time is it? 8:25. Sit back in your chairs. Here we go. The Long-Term Control Plan, LTCP, has to be completed before September 20. Okay, we all know that. We need to come up with $82 million by 2040 or 2045. According to the memo from Joe Cressa, that $82 million was in 2015. In 2045, it's going to be $109 million. Let's go on. The city served by 10% if I did it wrong. I spoke to Deb Hellman at Fosteria. She is the Safety Service Director. On the phone, asked her if Fosteria, and yes, the downtown businesses in Fosteria are hurting. Were they considering giving the whole community or downtown businesses a 10% reduction in their sewer revenue rates? The answer was no. I asked her, can I use your name and your city as a reference? And she said yes. I emailed John Harrington. He is the president of City Council in Finley. Emailed him, asked him the same thing. He emailed back and said he's president of City Council. Another gentleman takes care of that, but to his knowledge, Finley's not doing that. Let's move on. If we are taking in $6 million a year and we're spending $4 million a year, that is a net increase of $2 million from 2029, excuse me, in 2029. Of course, that's nine years from now. I don't need to do the math for you, but I will do this math for you. It's projected from that Raphael, whatever the name of that firm is. We're going to take in, and I'm going to elaborate here, $7.8 million. We're going to spend in 2029, $8.3 million. We're going to be in a deficit of $222,000. Move on one more year to 2030. We're going to take in estimated $8.1 million. We're going to spend $8.5 million rounded up. That's a deficit of $136,527. Now, that's 2029 and 2030. The reason I asked to table this is those projections from that mini-report that won't be available till September of 2020 do not include 2031, 2032, 2033. I don't need to go on. I guess my point is, and what's my other point here? If I get another note over here, since I have the floor, and that's not the, no, that's not yet. Let's go. That's not yet. That's not it. Yeah, I'm like Mayor Mons, it must have fallen in the river. Let's go from, oh, man, I know I got that here somewhere. Okay, I'm going to throw some numbers out in for this. Okay, I'm going to throw some numbers out in for discussion purposes. From twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty, we're going to see an increase of, oh, here it is. From twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty, we're going to see an increase of seven point seven million dollars in the, whatever they call that, TCBD, whatever that improvement is at the thing. That's seven million dollars. I looked on Fund Five Fifty-two, I think it is, I'm going from memory, and we currently have eleven million dollars in Fund Five Fifty-two. I anticipate that's part of the hundred and nine million dollars we need. If we have eleven million in escrow and we're going to add seven point seven million in the next ten years, that's only nineteen million dollars. I don't know what's taking place in twenty thirty-one through twenty forty. We cannot, I repeat, not make a decision on granting a ten percent increase to the whole entire community, villages, townships, et cetera, and et cetera. I say no with a capital N.
Councilman Jeff.
Yeah, if Councilman Jones is uncomfortable signing the legislation, I'd be happy to sign it.
Okay. Mayor Monson.
I just want to be clear, it's a decrease, not an increase. I think Councilman Jones misspoke when he said increase. It's a decrease that we're looking at right now. We're looking to decrease rates by ten percent, not increase them.
Councilman Jones.
I got frustrated. I may have misspoke. I'm talking about a decrease in twenty twenty-nine, a decrease in twenty thirty. And we just cannot afford a decrease of ten percent for eight months. Eight months is equivalent to, and I think President Fo touched on it when I asked, what's this going to cost? And it fell on deaf ears. And you're right, six million dollars divided by twelve months, less ten percent for eight months is four hundred thousand dollars. We're going to keep from this water treatment control plan when we need a hundred and nine million dollars. And like I said last meeting, and I'll say it for the public, I'll say it for myself, and I'm hoping the six of you can hear this. Who is going to pay for this? Not me, not Councilman Fo or President Fo. It's your kids, your grandkids. I do not think we should kick this down the road, four hundred thousand dollars, put it on the backs of somebody in twenty thirty, twenty forty. We were elected to monitor the finances of the city of Tiffin. I don't think we're doing it with this four hundred thousand dollars. Your input is valuable to me.
Okay. Someone else have any comments? Councilman Gillig. Mute. You're muted.
So I imagine when that day comes, we'd probably be looking at issuing bonds to maybe help with the, with the cost.
Exactly.
Okay, so I, I'm not sure that four hundred thousand dollars is really going to make a difference with, with that, Councilman Jones, especially when we're in the midst of a global pandemic, which you seem to be forgetting on a semi-regular basis. You know, especially with the Dora comments and limiting the hours. We need every arrow in our quiver to help our downtown businesses and to help our friends and neighbors right now.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you for those comments. I'm looking at the Jones residence here at ninety-seven North Sandusky. I went back sixteen months. I called the sewer department. What is our bills for the last sixteen months? To answer that question, it's six hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents. Divide that by eight billing periods, eighty-five dollars and eighty-three. The Joneses here at ninety-seven. And I'm going to speak for myself. My Aunt Marie said, leave her out of this. My bill in my name comes to eighty-five dollars and eighty-three cents for an average of eight periods. You divide that by a month, that's forty-two dollars a month. Ten percent less forty-two dollars is four dollars and twenty cents. For eight months, the Joneses are going to see. Someone's going to say, well, there's only two of you there. There's average family of four. All right, four dollars and twenty cents. Multiply that by family of four, we're talking eight dollars and forty cents. Is that going to make that big a difference to the residents of Tiffin, Ohio, and then to the downtown businesses who are not seeing these increased rates? They're not flushing the toilets. They're not using the sewer system. I'm here in the office. So for a family of four saving eight dollars and forty cents for eight months, I say no.
Councilwoman Boyle, you had your hand up next.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. Dale, city administrator, didn't you speak earlier stating that the analysis was performed on this? And we were, in fact, recommended to proceed as far as us being able to afford this.
I did, and as I listened to council talk, I was wondering if it might be helpful if I had Mr. Crea come to the next council meeting to discuss these figures in this rather complicated flow sheet because his firm does not feel that it will endanger anyone by providing the ten percent decrease for the period of time we're, we're speaking of and, and would not place our sewer revenue funds in a situation that, that might create future havoc for us.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, basically, Bridgette and Dale kind of covered a lot of what I was going to refer to is the fact that the firm that we have hired, that we all have confidence in, that is reviewing our sewer rates, said that we could do this and it would not have any kind of long-term impact as long as we kept it to this time period and this rate that they recommended. They would have no long-term impact on our overall ability to pay. And two, I view the, the, the help that we're giving the average homeowner, whether it's two people or it's four people, as a side effect of this. It's more so, in my opinion, to help out those businesses, once again, that were afraid of closing. They're using much more restaurants, breweries, bars. Those are the kind of places that throughout this are trying to survive. And even if they're not open right now, that means they're not making money. But that means as soon as they open, what, what do restaurants, bars, breweries, what do they use a lot of? And that's water. And let's make sure that they can stay open and that their sewer bill that may run five, six, seven hundred, whatever dollars a month, let's give them a little bit of relief. And I think it's just a side effect that as we're doing this, it's also going to help out the citizens of Tiffin. They're, they're getting that same ten percent decrease, and while it may not add up to eighty or a hundred dollars a month, it's still additional money in their pocket. I ultimately was viewing this from the standpoint that it's helping our businesses that may really be struggling right now to make ends meet, helping them stay in business, save them some money so that they don't close their doors and shutter. So I was looking at it more from that standpoint. If we can afford it, if we can give people a ten percent decrease in their sewer bills this year and five percent for the rest of next year, and it's completely affordable, and even the company that is analyzing our sewer rates says we can do it without any impact, why would we not do it to help out our businesses and our residents?
Thanks, Mayor. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Just to pay back on what the mayor is saying, it doesn't matter that those businesses were closed the last few months. They still have bills. Still have a minimum bill on their sewer, a minimum bill on their water. And then, once they do open, it's going to skyrocket with the toilet flushing and all that stuff. So yes, it does affect them now regardless if they're open or not.
Thank you. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I completely understand where Councilman Jones is coming from. My, my thought process is the same, but I thought the mayor explained it very well. And if this company that's going to be much better at analyzing numbers than I could ever hope to be believes it to be a, a good course of action, I would just like to share a, a brief story. I won't name the business, but I purchased something for about twenty dollars at a downtown business. And the owner, without a trace of sarcasm and just as genuine as could be, said, thank goodness I have this to put towards my electric bill. And, you know, for me, the shutdown really hasn't affected me, you know, other than having to try to teach middle school kids with a five-year-old and two-year-old, you know, pummeling me every so often. But I know that it's wreaked havoc on, on a number of members of our community. So as Mayor Mon said, it's really going to help out our businesses and, and really, it's, it's a bonus just for our friends and neighbors.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the feedback, and I've been coached, for lack of better terms, before. We need to listen to, listen to and trust the experts. Yes, this firm is experts. I wish I would have had this Joe Crea's phone number. I was thinking about calling myself. But again, I have been taken aside and cautioned, I don't need to be calling department heads. I don't need to be calling outsiders, et cetera. I would have loved to have this discussion before the meeting, and I strongly appreciate city administrator Thornton's idea of having him come to a Zoom meeting and explain these numbers to me. You all know, I'm not used to working with eighty-two million dollar budgets, items. I'm not used to working with a hundred and nine million dollar items. It was, and Councilman Gillig threw out the term bonds. I said to myself, bonds? And I didn't mean James Bond. I said, Bond, what the heck is Bond? I thought this five percent that City Council came up with
Pick a number.
eight, ten years ago, was a start towards this eighty-two million dollars. I thought it was a start towards the a hundred and nine million dollars. My dissertation from day one, you all recall that. If we're increasing our sewer rates by five percent every year and every year and every year, and this report comes back saying, oh, Tiffin, I'm sorry, the report is coming back in September of twenty twenty, and that five percent is not going to make a hundred and nine million dollars. So we need to increase the villages and the townships and every city residence, downtown business, pick a number, eight percent, eleven percent, to come up with a hundred and nine. That was my understanding of this whole hundred and nine million dollars. I never thought we were going to go out and purchase, pick a number, thirty million dollars in bonds, sixty million dollars in bonds to come up with this. Someone educate me here.
Mayor. All these things are paid for with bonds. So, you know, looking at eighty million dollars, it's estimated, there, there's different, there's different classifications of, that, that the money's used for. There's equipment replacement, usually an equipment is, this is one of the, I sat in on the conference call that we had with the gentleman we're talking about. And equipment has a life, a useful life in a sewage treatment plant, anywhere from ten to twenty years. So it's estimated over the next, next twenty, thirty years that you're going to have to replace that equipment. They put a value on it. So over the, over the period of time between now and, what, what's, is it twenty forty?
Twenty forty.
Huh?
Twenty forty is correct.
Yeah, so between now and then, we're, we're looking at potentially that much improvement that's going to be needed in the plant, not all at one time, but over the next twenty years. So the rates are based on, what they've done is they've taken a look at what the rates are, and they've, they've calculated that these are the amounts of money that you're going to have to charge people in order to, to make those repairs and upgrades over the next twenty years. So, you know, most of this, this money, the money comes from, we sell bonds. We're spending, what, thirteen million dollars right now? Okay?
We have a W P C L F loan that we start to repay, repay in twenty twenty-four. It's thirteen million, no interest.
Yeah.
Loan.
Right. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not simple, but it's not, we're not looking at, we got to come up with a hundred million dollars twenty years from now. This is, this is going to be spread out over, over that period of time. There's going to be different, there's going to be different construction projects. There's going to be different upgrades in the plant. So when those occur, those things are, those, the estimates come in and the city bonds them. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, it does. And this is the first reading of twenty seventy-five. I got to check my notes here. Okay, thank you. I'll quiet down, if you can believe that.
Okay. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to switch subjects a little bit. I know we are going to be, obviously, hiring a new police chief. Since the last meeting, we asked Mayor Monson about, you know, how the search is going to go and stuff like that. I always believe, you know, let's go to the source. So I went to a couple of the police officers, just kind of asked, like, what their opinion was, whether they wanted to hire within, you know, go, you know, wanted to change, hire without, you know, throughout the nation. And they said something about, it's kind of consensus throughout the police department that they don't like the ordinance that was put in place, that you have to have a degree to advance up. And so before I ask a couple of questions, I just wanted to ask, maybe Lotte Richter Howard, if you recall that ordinance and kind of the thought process behind it when it was passed, or if you remember it.
I, I do remember the change. I can't tell you exactly the rationale for it. Maybe others that, there were others on council back then. Yeah, I, I can't give you a, a good, good specific answer right now. I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance and think about it some more.
And maybe this is, you know, even some discussion for next time, but, you know, there's a couple of concerns that I had where I, I feel like there's obviously going to be more people getting out of policing than coming in. So the more restrictions we have, I think, are going to be bad. I, I had a comment made to me that Tiffin might be a dead-end job for some of these people that don't have a degree and can't move up. And I feel like personally, I'd rather have somebody with experience over somebody just out of college with a degree. You know, I'll take somebody with twenty-five years than somebody with the degree, and, and that person with the degree can jump above that person. I, I don't believe that's right. Or, you know, obviously, I think a degree should give somebody, you know, a bump up if we're considering two people, especially when we go for our chief position. You know, if we have person A, you know, maybe is from, I don't know, let's just say California, and they're very well qualified, have a degree. Person B is from Tiffin, also qualified. But we have person C, doesn't have a degree, has thirty years, would be the best person, but we can't hire that person because they don't have a degree. I just want to, want to limit ourselves. I'd want to have as many options as possible so we could pick the best person. So I thought I would just throw that out there, see if anybody else had some thought or input on that. Obviously, the mayor, since you will be involved in the process as well, so.
Councilman Gillig.
Yeah, I'm glad to.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly for Councilman Perry, were you referring to the requirement for the master's degree for the chief's position?
Yes, and I think there's also, you have to have a degree to move up to sergeant, I believe, right? Dale, is that correct, or?
There are educational requirements at, at each level. Part of that is related to council's action years ago. I, I can't speak to the rationale behind it, but I do believe that both education and experience are important, and I think are intense to hire the very best candidate who meets the criteria of education and experience.
And I, I agree one hundred percent. I mean, I would, I would say, you know, a, a degree would be preferred and, and not required. That way, we don't limit ourselves. And, and, I mean, that would just be my, my personal belief. But I, I, like I said, I thought I'd bring this up, and sorry I cut you off, Ben, but.
Councilman Jeff.
On the, on the flip side of that coin, though, too, I guess this is for the city administrator. Sometimes just because you have that college degree doesn't always mean that you're the best qualified for that job, though, either.
No, that, I hope I didn't infer that in my statement. I, I think when you look at the best qualified candidate, it's a mix of qualities. Certainly, as Councilman Perry said, if they have equal experience and one has a degree and the other doesn't, does that give them an advantage over the individual that doesn't? As we look at Minneapolis, as we look at some of the other cities that are experiencing problems in their policing, I think it's always advantageous for the chief to have a exposure to more than just policing, to some of the social issues that face our country as well.
Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question is for Aaron or Dale, the mayor or the city administrator. Do, how many, how many officers do we have that qualify for the chief's position? Do we even know that? Do?
Only two or three, I think.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I think we're open to any of these suggested changes, and even the possibility of making the position degree preferred, but not absolutely essential. But what I have found already that is causing even bigger problem, the degree issue, is the fact that, and I don't even know if it's anything that we, we can do here, is that that individual has to be in Police and Fire Retirement, or excuse me, Police Retirement Fund, and cannot be an Oprah's Retirement Individual. So you could have an extremely qualified person that may work at the state of Ohio, such as the Attorney General's Office. They could be a BCI agent, they could be an FBI agent. And unfortunately, that person will not apply for this job because it's a totally different retirement system, and it actually would cost them significant dollars if they were to apply, because they would have to go in fresh into police retirement versus being able to take all of that time. Now, it gets converted any of the time they would have for either the state or federal government. The problem is, it's not converted to one-to-one equivalent. So that honestly is a big hurt, because we had some folks who, of course, I'm not going to name, just reached out, BCI and others, that had interest in the position, that immediately, the interest has dropped to zero. And to me, it's incredible that a small city like Tiffin could have potentially a supervisory special agent that worked for the BCI or FBI or the Attorney General's Office. Unfortunately, those people are not even going to consider applying, because it's going to cost them significant dollars and retirement benefits.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Can I take this, you know, this subject, this is a little differently. I had posed a letter to the editor about ten days ago, and it still hasn't met the A P on behalf of the Alumni Association. I think it's kind of appropriate to share it with all of you or the community. So if you're with me, I read it to you. Southern Police Citizens Academy alumni would like to take this opportunity to thank our area police officers for their dedication and willingness to serve this community to keep us safe. We sincerely appreciate all that you do. At the Citizens Academy, we interact firsthand with the officers of the Tiffin Police Department, even after we graduate. We work at them at PIC rodeos, highway cleanup, safety week, to name a few. Many times, they are not on duty, but join us in their spare time because they care about Tiffin. Recent events have horrified all of us, including our officers. The department has a tight budget, but continually trained to avoid handling situations like Minneapolis. Misguided actions of a few not fine all police officers. Under the leadership of Chief Stevens and down through all of their ranks, the Tiffin Police Department does their jobs with integrity, hard work, and some days, a sense of humor. We would also like to thank Chief Stevens for all he has done for Tiffin, and wish him well at his new position as sheriff in January. And it is signed by all the alumni classes one through seven, with eight having been postponed temporarily. They hope to do that soon. So on behalf of the Citizens Academy, they wanted you to know this.
Thank you, that's very nice. Well-written. Councilman Perry?
I guess my, my final thoughts on this would be, this, you know, particular person I talked to, you know, he's like, he expressed to me, he's like, "How am I supposed to do additional schooling? We're already short-staffed." He's like, "I got a family, it's hard to, you know, it would be hard to do that continuing education right now." And, you know, I, I kind of saw his point there. And as far as the chief position, I mean, I, I want the best person. I would prefer the person B from the area, because, you know, I, I believe people at Tiffin care deeply about the community, and they won't want to leave. I respect longevity and commitment. Obviously, I know Mayor Mottz is going to take that into consideration when he hires someone. But I, I would think this would deserve to go to a committee, if everyone else would, would think so as well, at least to discuss it further.
Okay. Well, I have a, I have a request. How do the rest of you feel about that?
Never hurts to talk things out.
Okay. Mayor, would, would it be okay then if Personal Labor Relations Committee had to discuss, take a look at what's criteria are right now, and maybe ways that we can update it and prove it?
Sure, we're always open to any recommendations or anything that comes from council. I can't say, without seeing them all ahead of time, that we'll agree with every one of them, but we're open to any kind of discussion like that.
Okay. All right, well, Councilman Perry, we're going to assign you the, the duty of looking into it, since you brought it up, and.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Gilligan?
All right, just ever so briefly, Mr. President. Councilwoman Yonatuno, I've been racking my brain, where was your business in downtown Tiffin? Because I always remember Riverside for Draperies by Dawn.
Well, first, it was in my basement, then it was in my two-and-a-half-finished garage, and then it moved to Madison Street, right by MST. It's actually where the Stein Hospices now, I was there for quite a few years. Running off at Deckers, I did a lot of work for Deckers. And then Karen Bem said, "Hey, I've got this location beside me, would you consider moving?" So then I moved, I'm beside Bem and Henry for several years, but it was a nightmare trying to get loaded and parked in the alley. So we moved off of downtown because we needed access to get in and out all the time. Oh, I love being downtown. We actually, I mentioned before, we have lived downtown while our condo was being built. Absolutely love downtown, and so that's why I feel so strongly about trying to help them any way I can.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Um, yeah, could I take this opportunity to schedule my long community planning meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilman Leopard and Councilman Perry, does next Tuesday, the twenty-third, at five P M. work for you? I mean, I can never remember your schedule, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, it all depends. I mean, yeah, I, I, I'll be home, so.
Okay.
I might have kids, because my wife might work, but.
I'm good about it anytime, Virgil.
Okay. Yes, five P M. on the twenty-third. And the purpose of the meeting would be to discuss the request of allowing golf carts to be driven on the city streets.
And where are we meeting?
Um, I think we have a Zoom meeting, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, where, where, where are we going to meet?
Are we okay scheduling a Zoom meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just plan on that, then.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, just one last thing. Had a request from some different business owners downtown, and I went and drove it myself, but there is an alley between Washington Street and Jefferson. It's right next to the old bake shop that used to be across from Uncle Mike's. It's, it's got to be one of the worst alleys in town. I took my Jeep down it, and it was like riding down a safari road. It was pretty bad, but I was going to see if Dale could maybe get somebody from Public Works out there to check it out on request of some of the business owners, but it's, if we grade that or level it, it's just, it's rough.
I will talk with Public Works, they may already have it on their list. They have a very long list of alleys right now, they are working, trying to work on.
I, I assume, so just wanted to bring it to your attention, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Jones?
One, thank you, Mr. President, one last thing, and then I will keep quiet. Just want to be clear, was the city administration going to invite Joe Kria from Raph Telus to our meeting on the twenty-second to discuss the long-term wastewater pretreatment rates?
I did make the offer to do that, I didn't hear anyone instructing me to do so.
Well, I have been challenged, for lack of better, I cannot tell a department head or city official what to do. So I have to leave that to someone else, but I would be glad for someone from Raph Telus to explain in common language about bonds and increases and decreases. I would love to hear that before the third reading.
Councilman Gilligan?
May I ask that we invite a representative from Raph Telus, perhaps at one of our July meetings, instead of our special meeting on the twenty-second, perhaps either July sixth or July twentieth?
Yes, I, I agree. I think next Monday, next Monday, we're going to have replays fall. I'd like to, I'd like to postpone it to the sixth as well. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing I said I would be quiet.
Okay. Anything else? Anything for the good of the order? All right, good discussion, it's been a long night. Just a reminder, we're meeting next, next Monday, seven o'clock. So everybody stay safe, and God bless you all. We stand adjourned.